All right. I call the meeting of the Sanborn Regional School Board to order. Stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have any? For August sixteenth of twenty twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. I'm almost done with the manifest documents, I'll send those around in a second. Tom, nominations.
I just wanted to make a few nominations. One is we'd like to welcome Sarah Frizzy, school nurse, to the Bakey School. Kristi Lawton, the physical education teacher at the Bakey School. And at the middle school, we'd like to welcome Tiffany Fabiano for school counselor. Julie Negreli, special education teacher, and Douglas Osterloh, seventh grade STEM. I could have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Resignations?
We have one resignation, Nicole French Wallen, seventh grade STEM teacher.
Second. All in favor? Do we have any subcommittee reports tonight? I think it wants.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, great.
So, Public Relations Subcommittee met this evening. And just a couple of high-level topics, we discussed the goals for the committee with all of the big events happening within the district. And kind of our strategy moving forward to be as transparent as we can with the public, with all these different things that are happening. And we kind of discussed some strategies moving forward and the path forward. So those were our main topics.
Great. Thank you.
And on the finance Subcommittee, we had a couple of. We had one, one meeting over the summer that. I'm consolidating a little bit a minute to give everybody, yeah. So we did some budget adjustments for the, there's a twig science budget adjustment. We answered some manifest questions, but the two important things I wanted to mention were we discussed the purchase of IT network equipment. And battery backup, we had a couple of lightning strikes that took out all kinds of stuff. So we approved funds for the, to build redundancy on top of redundancy for those things. And we also were able to lock in for heating oil. For the year at an aggressive, good rate that Matt diligently worked with.
And say, God has Matt written all over it.
At two dollars and seven, seventy-seven cents a gallon.
Wow, great job.
For seventy-five thousand gallons, so that was exciting. So good things happening.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Student Council representative reports.
Over the summer, schools Ryan and Heather Woods created a new teacher toolkit to help new hires in the middle school and high school. Find most important information and resources for their first year. So there's lists of like Sanborn acronyms and competencies and curriculum resources and printable tools and links to the district site. It's smaller in scope than the district website and the new staff have been very appreciative of the resource made for them. The Sanborn cross-country teams hosted fourteen schools for the forty-fourth annual Jamie Martin Invitational. On Tuesday, the twenty-ninth, and the Sanborn girls captured second place overall. And junior Jake Petrie came in second place individually in the boys' race. Homecoming this year is going to be September eighteenth through the twenty-third. And we're gonna, students will celebrate by participating in spirit days, a pep rally, and the return of the float parade on Monday. On Saturday morning, which is going to be sponsored by the PTO. And the theme is eras, and that'll be demonstrated by banners, bulletin boards, and floats that the students.
Great. Thank you. All right. First public comment.
Did you skip the superintendent's report?
Nope, it's not on here, sorry.
Okay.
No, superintendence.
Thank you. I just wanted to take twenty-five minutes to, sorry. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to say a few things. Number one, this has been one of the best starts to school that we've had in the seven years I've been here. Even the first day when I rode the bus, no kindergartners cried. It was awesome, usually a couple. I spend most of the bus ride with a couple of them, kind of talking about what they enjoy over the summer. The kids got on the bus and they had so much fun and it was just what a great way to start the year. I've been visiting the Bakey and Memorial Schools pretty regularly. Or drop off or pick up and just kind of checking in with staff. And people are reporting that things are running very smoothly. The kids are settled into a routine and things are moving very smoothly. We've had a lot of activity with staff talking about academic performance, data, and instruction. And in my opening remarks at the beginning of this year, I spoke very much about the importance of teaching comprehension, inferencing, vocabulary, fluency, and word solving as a part of our approach to support our data. And that our PLCs, which is a professional learning community, it's a meeting for teachers to discuss instruction, will be focused on those areas. In addition to working on the, the new math program that we adopted two years ago. And the new reading program at K five that's been rolled out, which I've received very positive feedback for. I did attend a full day of training for the CKLA Amplify Program myself. I spent the morning with the memorial staff for three hours. And I spent a good chunk of the afternoon with the Bakey staff, learning about the program with our teachers and asking questions. I also attended some training on the NWA and how it can affect instruction with the high school staff. And I just wanted to say that I was very impressed with the professional development, very impressed with the, the content. And continue to be impressed with the program and, and even more supportive of our decision to move to that program. I've even had a couple of teachers that were very hesitant about the program, reach out to administrators. And share that they are, they have, they have turned the page, that they are very excited about the program now that they've gotten into it and they're moving forward. So I'm really happy to hear that and I hope to have more positive feedback about that in the future. I did want to say that, that I appreciate everyone's patience and support as we deal with this incredibly hot weather. I went to the Bakey School today with Mr. Angel. Thank you, Mr. Angel and his team for buying fourteen or sixteen hundred popsicles. Brought popsicles to everyone, sorry, brought popsicles to everyone in the district today. And I have to say that it was pretty, pretty fun to give kindergarten, first and second grade as popsicles on a hot day like today. But I, I do want to mention to parents that it was incredibly hot. We walked around the building for thirty-five or forty minutes and we were both drenched in sweat. And tomorrow, the heat index for, for the buildings will break a hundred and two degrees. So yes, it's ninety-five or ninety-four outside, but you have to remember that these concrete buildings don't have air exchanges and they've been bathing in the sun all day. So opening the windows at night helps, but it doesn't, if you don't have an air exchange system, you can't bring the temperature down. And so by noon or one o'clock tomorrow, the perception of the perceived heat will be over a hundred degrees. And based on the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, that is not healthy. So we have done for the first time, we're having a couple of early releases due to heat. I certainly want everyone to know that this was a very difficult decision to make. We could tolerate the heat today. It wasn't good, but it was tolerable. I don't believe that it will be tolerable tomorrow. And I did want to say to the board that the staff was incredibly grateful because it is very, very difficult, particularly for the kindergarten teachers. Because the kindergarten wing extends out of Bakey School and has no cover above it. So it's just the roof and it's just hammered with heat. Matt took a screenshot of the temperature up here in this wing for the middle school. It was ninety-something degrees without, eighty-nine to ninety degrees without the, the heat. You know, the humidity and the, and the different indexes that get included when you figure out the perceived heat. So I just want everyone to understand that that was today. And as you have four or five days of this, it gets cumulatively hotter because the, the concrete retains heat. So I'm very grateful for everyone's patience with this and, and for the support. And I just wanted to again say that it has been a fantastic start to the year. I really couldn't be happier, it's, it's been great, thank you very much.
I know we have to do a. Six-thirty. But we think we have time to get to the culture exchange program. I think so. Okay. So if the board is okay, I just skip to the program and invite Ms. Mercedes and Senior Mercedes and Ms. Mitchinson. All right, great, thank you. Is there a PowerPoint? Other PowerPoint.
And is this your first PowerPoint?
Yeah, you're gonna want to.
Hello, my name is Christina Mercedes, I'm the Spanish teacher, one of the Spanish teacher.
Christina, I gotta go to the podium. Yep, sorry, I can do this, yep. Just tell me when.
Okay. Hello, my name is Christina Mercedes, I'm one of the Spanish teacher here at Sanborn. And I'm so happy to be here with Ms. Mitchinson, with my wonderful student from our Spanish Honor Society. To talk about an exchange program that we want to do with the student from Dominican Republic. There is a college, this is private school called San Judas Tadeo, it's a high school in Dominican Republic. And they want to visit Sanborn here. And this is a school we have in exchange program through Zoom before the pandemic. And they are exciting to come here, they want to be here for about five days. To, you know, enrich and give the student the opportunity. It's not only the student, with my student, our student. And they, they will have opportunity to do, to immerse in the language, to immerse in the cultural aspect of the language. And they are looking forward to be here and to know how the student in the US, especially here at Sanborn, how they work. And for that, I want to pass to my wonderful students here for the presentation.
Hi, I'm Kate Buon, I'm a senior and I'm the president of the Spanish Honor Society. And I'm just going to start by telling you a little bit about the school that we'll be visiting, as she said, San Judas Tadeo. They're a very esteemed school, if you can read off of the slides, they have a lot of accomplishments up there. And I can say from a personal level, like I've met with the students over Zoom, as she said. They are some of like the sweetest kids you will ever talk to. They're always looking to like speak to us, they love to talk with us. I have some of them on like social media and we keep in contact still now. Like even without the Zooms, even over the summer, they love reaching out to us and they love to talk to us. And just having them come to the school would just give an incredible opportunity for them to meet so many more students too. That's another thing that we want to try to do. So yeah, some of the opportunities, both like groups of students, so the Spanish-speaking students will be able to talk to us in English. And us as English speakers will be able to speak to them in Spanish. And we can kind of like see how native speakers work and then they can see our, how we're speaking as natives, it'll be good. And then like, it'll, they'll be able to talk better, not better, but like hearing native speakers speak and like the fluency, the tone. It'll give them a better idea of how to do it. Also, we can exchange experience with them. So like some typical sports, foods, days, like how it works, our schedule isn't going to be the same as theirs. And we're going to have different things because we're in such different regions too. Like I'm sure they like don't really play field hockey down there, but like they love soccer probably more than we do, you know? Like when we talk to them, like, oh, what's your favorite sport? Soccer and volleyball, they love volleyball. But up here at our school, we don't really like, we're not as interested in it as they are. And then we'll get, both of us, we'll, both groups will experience firsthand culture, just getting to see how we live. And it's a good opportunity to represent Sanborn on like a global level, reaching out to these other countries, very cool to do.
Hi, everyone, I'm Sydney O'Toole, I'm also a senior and I'm the vice president. So some of the goals that we have are to better understand both cultures. Hopefully leave with great memories on both sides, the students from Sanborn and the students from the DR. We also want to learn something new each day and further develop our language skills within both English and Spanish.
Hi, I'm Tessa Donigan, I'm the treasurer of our Spanish Honor Society. So just to go, just to go over the timeline a little bit, they will be here from Thursday, October nineteenth to Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. So that is five days that we hope to pack in plenty of stuff and get the most out of this once-in-a-lifetime experience. And then we calculated the cost a little bit just to figure it out. So there will be four adults coming with them, so that'll be about four dollars twenty-five cents per person. So that's eighty-five dollars over the five days for the adults. And then there will be twenty-five students coming, so that'll be about three fifty per person. And that'll be about four hundred thirty-seven dollars for the whole five days.
So here we have some of the proposed itinerary, both from the school visiting and then some that we've made up. All of this is pending approval on the schedule and what administration, AKA Ms. Mitchinson, says that we can do. But we were thinking our goal would be to do it during advisory or FLT, so it won't take away from any academic time. But again, we can figure that out as we go along. The main one is linguistics, so conversations in English and about like first American influence of the Dominican. And then there will be scheduled conversations in Spanish as well about different topics. And then also an exhibition on the Dominican national sport and the representatives in America. So the linguistics part, speaking, listening, talking, conversations, just that general thing. And that honestly could be done during some of the Spanish classes too, so that like the kids taking the class can have that opportunity.
Here's a little bit more of the itinerary, also pending approval with Mitch, Mitchison. But on the art side, they've mentioned like piano solo, guitar solo, drum solo, performance of both English and. Oh, performance of two English and two Spanish songs, along with performance of workshop of typical dances like the bachata, moranga, merengue. And salsa dance, along with workshop of typical Dominican Republic painting. And on the sports side, like Kate mentioned earlier, men's basketball game, along with a women's volleyball game, which we can talk further about with Dr. Dawson as well. And then on the culinary aspect, they've mentioned typical Dominican cooking workshop.
Some ideas from the Spanish Honor Society, something that we really want to do is we kind of want to give an idea of that New England fall like feeling. Because they're coming in October, it'll be like peak leave changing season. So we really wanted to do pumpkin carving and like make little jack-o'-lanterns. And we could get the supplies, bring it to school. It could be an after-school thing with the Spanish Honor Society and the Spanish club, we do little partners, make little jack-o'-lanterns. And it would be something nice for them to do that's different than what they usually get to do for fun.
And then they have also mentioned us going to see them in Boston. So one of the things that they are going to be doing is a embassy trip. So they wanted a group of Sanborn students to join the DR students on their trip to the Dominican Embassy in Boston. It would be a great privilege to go on, but we still have a lot more other, like. Details, details to further make this trip happen.
So they will be staying in the Boston Marriott at Copley Place, right in Boston. And they have coach buses to bring them everywhere, so we won't have to worry about that.
And that's the end of our slideshow, but again, this is just going to be an incredible opportunity for both groups. And we're really hoping that we can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any questions?
Yeah, questions.
So are they driving up from Boston every day to come to school?
Yeah. They said they were okay with it, they want to stay in Boston, we were like, oh, well, you could say an exeter, you could say here. Nope, Boston. Our driver.
During the school day from whatever, seven, ten to two fifteen, and then they go, are they going back down to Boston afterwards?
Yeah, we were trying to, hoping that they could shadow some students and kind of follow them along during their day. Like I know that I have some free periods during the day that I could be with them and walk them around the school or whatever. So that's the plan.
So it sounds like you're asking.
Sorry.
Turns you off.
I did it to myself, sounds like we are, or you are asking for the funding for the lunches, approximately five hundred and ten dollars. And for permission to allow the students to visit Sanborn for the five days during the school day and for permission to go to Boston, to the. The embassy, thank you. Is that what you're asking for the board? I just want the board to understand so that they can deliberate.
Yes.
Thank you. It's a great slideshow, I just wanted to summarize to make sure the board knew what to make a motion for.
Hit all the points, gotcha.
Thank you.
And the party size is twenty to twenty-seven? That accurate?
Twenty-five and four.
We have twenty-five students and then four adult chaperones.
Twenty-nine total. There's some type of. Larynx check or something the adults need to go through, is there anything like that that we need to?
How does that work? Because we can't let volunteers in the school without.
Let them in, yeah, how does that work?
So it's important that they, adults can come into the school with the principal's permission, provided that they're not working individually with private students. So when an adult goes on a field trip and they take a group of five kids to tour the field trip alone, they have to be fingerprinted. But they don't have to be fingerprinted to just visit the building.
I'm just, I'm just curious how that works, if you've got them in the building with students in groups. Do they have anything on their end?
I think that's a legit, yeah, I should ask Jen about the logistics, it's a great question.
I just. Yeah, because we make everybody.
So it's fair to assume that they've had some type of.
I assume that because they are, we have two English teacher, we have the Spanish teacher, and we have one mom. I can check with them, but you know, they work in the school.
Right, I just, I don't, I just didn't know what.
Yeah.
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 I have one other comment, I, I think this is a really awesome. Experience and seeing this. One thing too, I mean, I'm curious to maybe if you have something to say about this, but I studied Spanish in high school. And I studied abroad in Spain. But what I found was a lot of the words, they don't use from like the DR or Puerto Rico, there's, there's a lot of more like car, right? Is it? They say carro, not coche? But so I guess I'm getting it, there's like the dialect is a lot different. So I think it would be, and I don't know what kind of dialect the Sanborn students are being taught now. But I found that some of like the simple words, I learned, it, it would have been very helpful too to just get this dialect. Because I think this is what you hear more commonly here. I don't know what is being taught now, but I think it'd be cool for them to get that dialect.
Yes, we have a mix of canci, cansli from Spain. I mean, Spanish is Spanish, doesn't matter what, it's the same scene about English. You can have some different word, like in Mexico, they call, we call piscina and they call Alberta. We told the student in Mexico, we say, they say Alberta. And in DR, in other part, we say, you know, piscina, I mean, the student know.
Right, and I just, I think that's really good exposure for them to get.
Yeah.
Different vocabulary that other people, just like the British use different words than we do for trunk or whatnot. So I think it's a really cool opportunity to learn stuff off the cuff.
Yeah, because I'm from DR, you know, I'm from Dominican Republic.
Yeah, that's really cool.
I had a question, so I think the only thing I, the embassy trip, how would we? Like transportation, all of those things would, I feel like that would be, that's like a separate conversation.
There is something, they mentioned that we were working with Mitch, Mitchison, we do all the step. About how we can do this thing, just some idea that the student have and want to do this. We need to go into more detail about that.
And have a little more too. So anytime, so then we would just treat that day like any other field trip. So then Ms. Mercedes would fill out the field trip form and eventually goes here to this level anyway, gets approval, Tom has to approve it, Matt looks at it. We have, I have lines available for co-curricular transportation and stuff. So we would look at then, you know, I have funding available to cover like the bus costs, which I imagine would probably be the only expense on that day. And we could open it up to, you know, most of the Spanish two, three, three students, Spanish three, Spanish four. You know, students who've been studying for a few years. So we could make it worth it if we were going to have a whole school bus. So, does that help?
Yeah, thanks. I make a motion to approve the exchange visit, the meals and the embassy trip.
Second.
Was the last part you said?
The embassy trip.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I, I, I'd like a little clarity on the background check. So I don't. I would just be interested to see what background checks the teachers are required to have before we land in the school. No offense.
Can we set something, can we make a motion pending?
Pending.
There's a lot, there's a, there's a lot in here that says, well, what, there was a little box that kept on saying something about pending approval. Yeah, so there's a lot of steps and we'll.
Yeah, it's sort of a clear them off for it, I just, I make sure we check the box.
Because we'll get lots of questions.
Yeah, for multiple days.
Remake the motion, assume.
All the time.
All right, so I will amend my motion to, I make a motion to approve the exchange program, the cost of meals, the embassy trip. Pending the background check information.
Second.
All right, so you amended, you seconded the amendment. Great, okay, any further discussion?
I actually have a question about, when you're talking about the background check, what do you want to see from them? Because they are teacher and they are to be in school and also just to get to the embassy visa, the little background check. From there, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I'll answer that. I, I will work with our attorney to double-check what we need to make sure that the district's insurance will cover any liability. Matt will work with Primex, we'll, we'll just make sure that our eyes are crossed and our, our eyes are dotted and our Ts are crossed, sorry. But, don't, thank you very much, thank you very much, everyone forgets, especially when your name's Jay, Micah Patillo. I, I think it's really important to, to recognize that there's a difference between volunteering and working directly with our students individually. And visiting the school, there's a difference. And a lot of folks in the public are confused, they think that to volunteer in any capacity, they have to have fingerprinting, they don't. If you're volunteering in a, in a classroom under the supervision of a teacher, you, as long as the teacher is always present, that's fine. But if the teacher is not going to be present and the volunteer is going to be alone with students. Then they have to be fingerprinted for regular volunteering, this is a field trip, Mrs. Mercedes is going to be with these adults and kids. We, we need to have our staff with them while they're here visiting, all the time.
Clarification on is if they're going to be here all day, they have classes to teach and.
Right. Exactly, so one, one of the expectations that I would have is that there is a staff member assigned to each adult in group of kids for the day. So that one of our professional staff members, this, this can't happen without that happening, just from a Primex perspective, so. Yeah, yeah, but I'll check with Jim and Matt will check with Primex and I'll make sure that Jen has all the I's, little Js dotted and the Ts crossed. Yeah, we could send an update to the next board meeting, I'll bring, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, just liability, we want to be careful.
Want to deal with all the nasty phone calls. So we try to cover everything.
I will, I mean, and this could be a, a different conversation for a different day. What you just explained is not what's being put out into the community about like.
It's not.
I, give me a call, I'll explain it to you, because I've personally said it to people directly, the way I just explained it, I'm not sure what's, I, I hear you. I have heard that, yeah, thank you.
So even to step into the school and volunteer, you're being told you have to fingerprint, so I just, I just think for the community, we might need to.
We, we have some folks that feel that it's easier to just say get fingerprinted. But we can do that later.
Sure.
Yeah.
Great, great presentation.
We, thank you, we, wait, we didn't, we didn't actually. We, thank you. We, wait, we didn't, we didn't actually. We didn't, we didn't do a thing.
Bring it back. Okay. Are no further.
Before you go.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much for all the hard work.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Alright, uh, so we now have our public hearing for the Carlton Stockwell Scholarship Fund.
Great. It's my turn.
Your turn.
I'm sitting next to him.
Alright, um, Carlton Stockwell was a math, sock, sockwell, I'm sorry, was a math teacher at um, the middle school. And I'm sure all of you that have attended uh um, the regional school district have met him. I unfortunately have not met him. I met his brother Kevin and Kevin um, worked very hard. And he collected uh, just over seven thousand dollars worth of donations to create a scholarship. And this scholarship is for um, a student at the school district um, as a graduating senior interested in becoming a school teacher. Um, with a GPA of a three point oh or higher at the time of the application. Um, although not required, but math club participation is a plus.
I love it.
Okay.
And I also heard along with this, you might get a math cube and a Tyconderova number two pencil. Just saying, those are very important. The kids.
Yes, I understand.
Two little pieces are.
Tom still talks about the number two pencil.
Yes, has to be in Tyconderova number two.
I make a motion to approve.
Since there is no public here for the public hearing, well. Taking the motion and do I have a second?
Second.
Great. Uh, any discussion? Alright, other than I would just like to say a huge thank you to um, Kevin Stockwell. And all of the people that donated to this GoFundMe to create this fund. Um. Mr. Stockwell was definitely. He was a huge part of the community. Um, he made, he didn't have his own. His own family, but he made our community his family. Um, so this is, this is huge and this is very much appreciated. Alright, uh, all in favor? Unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Uh, so we will move on now to, it looks like we're down to uh, the memorial report card.
Just need stepping.
Oh, okay. Okay, it takes a while to come around the side. Um, I did share this, but anyone like a paper copy to look at?
We have extras. I love paper.
Alright. I know you like your paper. I made sure I had paper for.
I like, I like it. Thank you.
You're welcome, of course.
I mean, more.
First thing first.
Hey, good evening, everyone. I am seeking approval and adoption from the school board this evening for the updated memorial school grading and reporting. Uh, so that for their report card and also this is the manual that um, would be given to teachers as well as um, tweaked and given to families as well. Uh, this coincides with the directive from the school board as well as being outlined in our current strategic plan. And the expectation for Niasq. So as you can see here, the grading scale is also aligned to what's the current middle school and high school grading scale is. The course grade calculation is there on trimesters. That would be thirty-three percent each trimester for the end of year score of a hundred percent. It goes through uh, the formatives and summatives, very similar to what. To what the middle school and high school currently have. Homework is outlined in here as well at ten percent for the grade. Reassessments and re-learns. You can see here that their original assessment has to scope, score below a ninety. So that is at an A minus if you actually look at the grading scale. And this dovetails nicely into what the middle school and high school have. The middle school's going to have eighty-five percent reassessment. And while the high school's going to have eighty. So this is the building where the students would start this grading practice, this traditional grading model. And then they would move into the middle school and high school. So we wanted to do was we wanted to make sure it was very baseline. And then built upon a little at the middle school and then that final plateau for the high school for their last four years. It outlines missing work, uh, late work incompletes. There's also a section here under modifications and accommodations. For those students that have a file five oh four or an IEP and does go into plagiarism and academic honesty and cheating, but that's more for. Grade five is their transitioning into the middle school environment versus like a, a grade three or four. Although there is copying on the bus all the time. So you know, there's that. I did uh, bring this to ISA last month, but I'm seeking approval and adoption this evening if the board agrees.
Are there any questions for first being?
I have a couple of questions. Anybody? Is there? I don't know if it's relevant at this level in your opinion, but. In the academic honesty and integrity session, section. Is there anything explicitly about the use of AI?
Yes.
So that is something that we wanted to talk about. Um, we went back and forth as to whether to include that or not, and we could absolutely include it.
Yeah, and I don't know that we should necessarily say that using it is cheating either, but we should as a group, you know. De- define a responsible use. Kind of policy, right? Because there are good ways to use it and.
Yes, and I think moving forward, I would, would request that the board. Does get ahead of that and develops a policy around the appropriate use for AI.
Yep.
You read that, that was the one thing I was thinking.
Yeah.
We had some very good discussions about that.
Yeah, yeah, that was one. And then. If anybody else has any questions while I think of the other one that I forgot. That would be great.
This with regards to AI, it's going to be a tool going forward.
Yeah.
In a way, it should almost be taught. It's.
Responsible use, yeah.
Right. The other would be the challenge of. Proving that somebody used AI. I use AI. I use AI at work every day.
Yeah.
Um, I ask it questions all day long.
They, they had the same discussions about the calculator probably.
Yeah.
Right? So we'll have to figure that out.
It's, it's going to be a tool moving forward, so.
And my suggestion would be to include it in like a STEM class, especially at the elementary level and moving to like a middle school level. It's the perfect spot to. To add the appropriate use and the responsible uses for such tools and make it part of their curriculum.
Oh. This is more of just, this is just my own. How come there's no D in the grading scale?
Okay.
Yeah, I know, in general, not just for this. I just, I, I don't know the answer, so I want to.
Uh, so with the state guidelines, um, with what's coming from the three oh six laws. So currently students have to pass a civics test in order to walk across the stage of graduation. You need at least a seventy and a seventy with the state is a C or what they consider to be proficient or you've mastered a. A goal, a scale, a competency. Um, so we wanted to align to that versus saying to students, oh, okay, well, you can have a D now, but oh, just kidding. No, you can't. And pass. So to us, a D was not passing. Um, passing was really a C minus or better. And then the, the F is, the F is larger, but we couldn't. Say, okay, one thing here, but then the state's communicating something else to families um, for when they're trying to walk across the stage. So when we all sat last summer, which seems lifetimes ago, um, with the middle school and high schools develop their report card and grading manual. And we went through the grading scale. That's why we went with, without the D and we omitted the D. That's an excellent question.
It's just, it was really for consistency and messaging.
Correct.
And I'm all for raising the standards anyway.
And, and, and because really. Do we pass at a D?
Yeah, that's a separate, a separate question, right?
A D really isn't passing. It's.
Well, it shouldn't be.
Not according to what the state standards are, what requirements are.
And I'm not comfortable with our students, say, you know, settling at sixty-five percent of, you know, the content. So, yeah. I don't know that I would make it passing if it existed. My, the question was really about whether or not. You know, the psychological impact of seeing an F, like is thirteen percent work the same as sixty-eight percent work? For us, right?
Right.
Right.
For a student and being able to acknowledge that, you know. But, yeah. That was, that was the logic behind it.
Yeah.
But I get the whole thing about aligning to the.
And I think to like. How often, I totally understand where you're coming from. I kind of had the same thought, but I've always thought D was sort of that weird grade. Like really, what did that mean? Like a D was not good.
You passed, but you were.
Yes, but you.
Yeah.
By this, um.
You weren't getting the keys to the car if you got a D. Um. Uh, but kind of to that point, can I, do students actually get like thirteen percent? I mean, how many students really get that low of a number? Get below fifty percent like. I don't know. In, in my mind, it, I really don't know. I feel like if you're going to fail, you probably got between a fifty and a seventy anyways. You're not really getting a thirteen.
Oh, yeah, I don't.
You failed it.
I threw that number out.
No, I, no, I know, but I guess that's just what I'm thinking, especially um.
If you do nothing all year, you.
Or, or how about?
I, I've seen it.
How about this?
Well, for, and have they gotten?
A sixty-one is the same as zero.
They've not passed the class, but like, right, they have, that has been their score, yes.
They get the same, the same score as someone who didn't try.
Does F mean they don't move on? Like it used to be, if you failed, you couldn't move on. Can't go to algebra two if you fail algebra.
For high, middle. Yes, like you, like for high school, like if you fail.
You don't get the credit.
You don't get the credit. I think for elementary, I think it's on a, it's like a different conversation.
Yeah.
Right.
And it also depends on if the F is, you know. Your overall year end grade or if it was, you know, right. Yeah, or a quarter grade for one subject or whatever it may be. So there's lots of different.
An F, yeah, an F in Jim and an A plus in Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's all subjective. I mean, to, to Micah's point, if somebody's got a sixty-nine versus somebody's got a zero or thirteen, do you want to hold back the sixty-nine? As well as the zero, the thirteen.
I think that's where bigger conversations come in, and I think that's where communication home is critically important, you know, student, teacher. The student, teacher communication, um, you know. Between home and teacher communication um, to.
Tr- trimester one, trimester two, trimester three. So i- if you're paying attention all, all year long.
Time.
Situation at the.
At the end of the year.
You still get the numerical grade on the report card, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
So you know that you got an F, but you got.
Right.
And right.
It's not going to be, yeah, your sixty-eight isn't going to be reduced.
And right now they're getting an A through F scale. They just didn't have. This zero through one hundred associated with it. So they do currently and they have for a couple of years. So that's not going to be. Um, it's the, the numbers associated with.
Right. And I can kind of say, having seen this for a few years now with my own kids. I think I've, I'm, I'm fine with it. It was definitely like a, what happened to the D like, I don't know. But again, a D was just always one of those weird things, so.
I think newer parents, you know, parents with younger kids, I think they, a lot of people still struggle with like weird, why did we get rid of the D? So I just think it's, we need to continue to educate. Families as they come into the district and especially as they move to the memorial, you know, because we know that for baking.
Well, so. I, I don't want to open a can of worms, but I'm going to say this anyway because I'm me. Do you really want kids getting below an eighty? I don't. I don't want kids getting below an eighty. A sixty-nine is definitely an F in my mind. I, I would call a seventy-four an F, but there's got to be a cut point. So you asked a great question. Do, do you really want? Do you really want kids to fail? I, I want kids to know and be able to do the things that we need them to know and be able to do. To be successful in a world of work where there are no menial jobs. Because the current first graders are going to face a world where cleaning is automated, electric cars will drive people as taxis. And they had better know how to read, write and do math, or they're not going to have a job. We have to face the stark reality that the world that we grew up in pre-technology doesn't exist now. It's going to be exponentially less existent when they're in twenty-two years old. And I know it's morbid to talk about it, but we have to talk about it. I, I believe that every one of these kids can successfully read, write and do mathematics at truly to the core of my being. And, and, and so, so the question is, the question is, where is the cut point where we say to them, you're not meeting the standard? And, and I think you asked a fantastic point, and I just want to say. I, I think sixty-nine is what we've agreed on as a group as a cut point. And I can accept it and live with it, but I would argue that we might want to bump it up some eventually or bump up what the assessment is. Because what we have happening is students passing classes, but the data from our, our external testing. NWVA, the SATs, the PSATs. Um, and, and the NHSAS are showing that our assessments aren't rigorous enough. Because if you pass the class, but nineteen percent of our kids are doing well in mathematics on the SAT, we have a problem.
No doubt.
So all, all that I'm trying to say is that the, the cut point isn't really the problem. The rigor of the assessment is.
Sure, of course. I, I agree, but. I mean, I agree with you on. On that. Like I, if I had it, if there was a D here, I don't know that I would, I still wouldn't say, oh, I should, that should be passing.
Yeah, thanks, Micah.
But the, the idea for me, the reason I brought it up was. I think it's, it's probably about how we, we communicate with teachers. As the first sort of, as the, it's the most immediate point of contact with students about how you talk about what this letter means. Because I don't want kids to think that we don't care how close they got. It's all the same. It's all an F.
I love that and I agree with you completely.
Because we do care how close, because it matters if you're almost there versus you didn't try, right? So we want to be able to show. To kids that we care, you're almost there. You're, you're, you're close, right? And we want to be able to represent that in some way. So if we're not going to do it with a D. We need to do it in conversation, right? So we, we should probably just have that, you know, in the back of our minds to show that we value. Effort and we're not reducing slightly subpar work to simply, it's all, it's all an F, right?
I agree completely and, and, and I want to also echo that. It, it's important for everyone to understand that our message to the community and the, the staff is no one should get a surprise on a report card. You should get a phone call home prior to getting a report card. There should be ongoing regular communication if you're on that cusp of a. It, it's one thing for me to call you and say, your daughter is getting a thirteen. And this is the problem versus saying to you, hey, Micah, we got to just kick it up a hair here. We're, we're, we're at a sixty-eight or a sixty-nine. Really, really what we're talking about is the purpose of a report card is to track the progress. But the real work is in the rigor of the schoolwork, the T, the quality of the teaching and the engagement of the parents with the school process. So parents need to talk to teachers too. They need to call them when they see, my wife has that thing on her Apple Watch. And every time my son's grade changes, the thing beeps and she's all over. I'm like, oh my God, that's way too much, right? Like, okay, let's not do that, folks. Sorry, Mrs. Ambrose. But, but it, she is that on it, right? So she knows when things move and she. Then texts me and anyway, it's a whole thing, but, but being on it is important because this is a dialogue between teachers, parents and students. And so as long as what we're doing for grading is understandable by parents and creates a scenario for that dialogue, we're going to be way more successful.
It's, it's good that the number is there.
I. The percentage, yes.
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with this. I, I just, I, I don't think bumping up anything lower than an eighty is failing. There are a lot of kids that work. Really, really hard to get that C and I don't like, not every kid is, and I just, I, I feel like. We're, we're going to have more kids fail if we. Don't, and I agree, we need to do the rigor and, but there, there has to be that happy medium. So I am comfortable with this. I think this. Makes a lot of sense. I think a C or higher should be passing.
Yeah, and I, and I approve this document. I'm just saying that the rigor is a concern. Like I'm fine with that, Heather.
But you had just said like we should.
Yeah.
Eighty and.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's okay. Yeah.
So just real quick, we, we've talked before and I knew, I know why you use the SAT reference. The SAT is not the reference we want to use for everybody. I get why you used it in the standpoint, right? Not everyone is college bound for those.
That's right.
That is a standard, not the standard.
That's right, there.
Okay, then I, one other quick question here for uh, Christine. So there's a little bit of. So there's a little bit of crossover between this document when it comes to like plagiarism, cheating, things like that. And then we have like the, the student handbooks, then we have the code of conduct, right? There's all these different things. Do they all mesh? There's no.
So.
Between them?
So what they're going to do, they just finished the student handbook, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna take this document. And look at it across what the student handbook is for memorial.
Perfect, thank you.
And I do want to mention within Alma that, um, the setting has been checked off for the memorial. As well as middle school and high school, that every Friday if a student is missing work, the parents get an email.
Oh, nice. Oh, that's nice.
So teachers are updating every, their grades every couple of weeks.
Yeah.
As is their requirement, and then if, if for some reason. Sam misses. An assignment. Or didn't pass in something that you know is in his locker or sitting at home on his desk. Then you get a little, you pop a little notice and, oh, so you already know like ahead of time. Which I think for, for us, from our end as educators, we want a partnership with the families. And grading does that. It provides communication back and forth, so we can all help the students succeed.
God knows, I can't figure out Google Classroom, so that.
Oh, okay.
Um, I make a motion to. Uh, report card.
And so we're saying we're gonna treat the AI. Piece separately.
Separate.
Absolutely. We're gonna have to create a policy.
We have to create a policy.
AI is going to be a topic over the next year or two that we're going to have to discuss.
And what we can do is once you have a policy, and once you all feel comfortable with that policy, we can then. Edit these documents and then repost them based on that policy.
Second that. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Unanimous, great, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine.
All right, um, signing of the Sanborn Epping Raymond Hockey Agreement. Matt, do you have the hockey agreement?
Sorry, yes, I have the hockey agreement.
Okay.
All right, so, um, uh, this is a three-year agreement, starting this, uh, school year, next school year, and the following school, school year. And it's to form the, uh, the, the, uh, hockey team between, uh, Sanborn, Mitchell. Epping and Raymond. And, um, Epping and Raymond will contribute eight hundred dollars per player per season, and we're gonna manage the funds, the team, and all the uniforms. So on. And so what we're asking for is, um, a, approval to sign or assign the agreement. Or give authorization to sign the agreement, and then I need the superintendent and the board chair to sign.
Okay. So we already have the Sanborn Epping, um, co-op, so we're just looking to add Raymond to it. I know this is something we've already kind of talked about at one point. Um, I don't know that, no, you weren't here on the board at that point. Um, I can't remember if I and Micah were.
I haven't.
It was a while ago.
But I know. I, I don't know.
Yeah, no, Dr. Dawson came in.
He came in.
When he was Mr. Dawson.
Yeah. It was back for a doctor, before he was.
I've only known Doctor both.
Oh, okay, all right.
Fine. For you.
Um.
He's giving up Doctor Amber.
This would be Tom.
Oh, I don't know that.
Um, so we're just looking to add, uh, they're looking to add Raymond into this cooperative. Um, Raymond doesn't have a lot of hockey players. They can't field a hockey team. Um, and they, by adding Raymond to this cooperative, it actually helps the Sanborn Epping team strengthen by adding a couple more players to it. Um, so it's a benefit to all.
And. Doctor Dawson's managing this?
Yes, he has been. Um, so this will just be the addition of Raymond to it, so nothing will really change. I mean, he'll, he'll keep doing what he's been doing.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah.
Are there?
Wanna make a motion to sign?
Yep, so yeah, we need a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Great, uh, any further discussion? All right, yep, just wanna say, um, happy to have more kids play and be involved. All right, all in favor? All right, unanimous, great. Um. All right, okay, so, um, school board vice chair and subcommittee assignments, so. Uh, Ken, you, being new, I know I've kind of already mentioned to you, um, you know, what we were thinking about. Um, but, uh, if no one is opposed, I would like to assign them to personnel, facilities, and finance in Jamie's place. Everybody seem, everybody good with that? All right, great, so you are officially now personnel.
Congratulations, Ken.
Welcome, Dan. Welcome to the team.
Want to be chair of the personnel committee?
Yeah.
Going a little faster.
She's smaller, let the new guy get settled.
I know.
All right, um, and then since we no longer have, uh, Dr. Patrick as our vice chair. Um, and now that we have a new board member, um, I think it's the appropriate time to nominate a vice chair.
I would like to nominate, uh, Micah for vice chair.
Second.
All right. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
I vote.
Yeah.
Feels weird.
You vote for yourself.
That's true.
And, and lucky you, next time you get to sit next. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to handle this.
That's what I've been saying. I've been saying we should do that, but.
I'm not even doing anything that people are talking about.
I know.
It's him.
Okay, so we'll move on to discussion.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna quickly talk about the process. So in March and April, I create a draft, um, timeline based on the laws of capture. And then we handed, I'm sorry, we wait for guidance from the Department of Revenue. And then we also, um, you know, updated based upon that, handed to our attorney, who also makes adjustments and then sends it back to us. With adjustment. So this has been reviewed by our attorney. It's, it's, um. Everything's in line with the state law. The important, um, pieces of it that I want to point out is, um, the superintendent's gonna propose, uh, the district school budget to the school board. Um, November first. The school board is gonna deliberate, um, during November. Hopefully, they're gonna approve it November twenty-ninth. Um, and it are recommended to the budget committee on the twenty-ninth. Budget committee's gonna start deliberating it on the thirtieth. And, and hopefully, they're going to wrap up their deliberations on December fourteenth. Um, and then we're gonna run into the, the holiday season. Um, then we're gonna have, let's see. November, I'm sorry, January ninth is gonna be the public hearing. Uh, then we're gonna hop down to February seventh. It's gonna be the first deliberative meeting, or it's the first session of a district meeting. And then March twelfth is gonna be the, um, the second session of a district meeting, which is the, the day we're all gonna vote. Right? So I'm gonna be looking for a motion to approve this calendar.
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention.
I could start over if you want, and make it longer.
I don't think I can. I just made a mess.
Second.
All right. The discussion? All in favor? Yes, thank you. All right.
Who's the Budcom rep?
Me.
Yeah, we didn't get those.
Meeting smarter.
Okay, Micah. Vice chair and Budcom, you're just.
A lot of meetings.
He's loving life.
A lot of meetings.
Rick has a lot of experience on Budcoms.
Slap turbo.
Uh, so.
We make a motion to put Rick back on Budcom?
Yeah, I, I would, I second that right now.
I can't make that motion, but Jeremiah could.
Uh, no, that's not nice. Um, school board goals for twenty-four. So I know in our drive here. Had a couple of. Couple of. Potential recommendations, um, we even have a chance to look at them, any thoughts towards, um. Um, we're having anything drafted themselves that they would like to. Um, so the first, uh, the first one, um, is hold quarterly reviews, tracking progress of the strategic plan. Including, but not limited to, the implementation of K-five reading program. A twelve math program and the NIAS accreditation. Um, along with that, um, because we're talking about tracking the progress of strategic plan, that would also include. Um, everything in strategic, uh, whether it comes to personnel or. A- anything whatsoever, um. Really focusing on and being strategic about, um, tracking the strategic plan. With quarterly reviews that we will. Um, set schedules for, um, and instead of. Tom and I had kind of talked, um, instead of holding those reviews maybe in the subcommittee meetings like we have been. Um, doing them at full board meetings, so everyone gets the updates on it, uh, all at the same. That way, everybody is, uh, clear on what's going on, um, in a consistent manner. Yeah.
Don, are we just, are we, are we suggesting here that Phyllis will just add these items in on a quarterly basis moving forward? That way we'll know that they're there for updates, is that what we're?
I think, um.
Proposing anyways.
I think it might be good, I, I was reflecting on this this afternoon. It might be good to say trimesterly, because schools quarterly.
Right.
Is, it would imply that we meet July and August.
And agreed.
So I think we could say trimesterly and also just make sure it says not limited to. Because what, what, what I think. Yeah, thank you, and that's what the intention was. I think that the, the, the point is to provide the administrators with an opportunity to share with the public in the board. The hard work that they're doing to implement these things. But in terms of, uh, public relations. The K-five reading program, the math program, and the NIAS accreditation are very, very important things that are going on. In addition to the other items that, that I listed here, particularly the contract for teachers, the budget, the work with Fremont. There's a lot happening. It's a busy place, and we, I'd like to celebrate the hard work that the team is doing.
Yeah.
That is the trimester update frequent enough?
Yeah. I think so, yeah.
Up for the public pick?
Um.
Doesn't, doesn't the new, uh, reading? Rental.
Oh, yes, yes, there's all kinds of parental engagement that will go home and documents, Rick, you're right. This is more about the board getting an update about what's. For the, for the holistic implementation of the program. So I gave one update tonight in my superintendent's report. The first few days, we're really positive. But I, I don't think that it would, there would be enough to report, so like, we have another P Day in October.
Okay.
There'll be a big day then, and then another one in November, and then you guys would definitely need an update in November on what's going on with the reading program. I think it's enough.
So I asked the question, so then, because I was gonna ask, how does that work trimester? And then you just said November, we'd probably have update. I was just curious how, does a trimester ends first week of December?
Yeah, I, I was thinking.
I was just wondering, like, would it be the, you know, sometime in December, but you kind of just made a comment about November, so.
Yeah, I was thinking.
You get the first round of updates, November, December.
Okay.
The next round of updates, February, March, and then the next round of updates toward the end of the year as we look with an eye to setting goals for the following year.
Okay.
So I, I think I just. Just take away the thought of this is new. It, it's a lot of work for the teachers. It's a lot of work for the parents. The more information we share. As frequently as possible, the better implementation you're gonna have.
I agree. Yeah, I agree completely. And those, the nice thing is the program for, for reading has the, uh, the regular. Updates that go home to parents as part of the program. And so that's really important that parents read those.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more thinking about the speed bumps that the staff is gonna have, where the parents could have a, an impact. Where we're not waiting for a teacher parent conference to have that three months down the road. That if we get feedback from the teachers that, okay, we think the parents could help us implement this program by doing X. And it could be reading five minutes a night or whatever it is, right? So just keep that.
Thank you.
Ask and keep it open.
I, we could, we could do hold at a minimum trimester, trimesterly reviews, tracking progress. And we could add that little caveat in there, so that if we need more frequent, we can. Just more frequent.
Yeah.
I have a thought or strategy. I think we could keep it to, you know, at the minimum of the three, but also I think. Tom, you do a good job in your superintendent or already of doing some of these things, so maybe you have like the full strategic plan update. The, the, the trimester, but during your superintendent report, like, maybe you can highlight a different period.
Yeah.
Of the strategic.
I'm fine with that, yep.
That's good.
I think.
Yep.
I, I think that will give a little bit more regularity. It won't be the whole strategic plan, but like, I know. Like, when I give updates to my team, I pick a different focus area. When we meet monthly, so.
And that'll probably make those quarterly or trimesterly updates, um, more effective too, because you'll have background knowledge that you can up into.
And, and I'm happy to invite Christine in occasionally to give like a, a midpoint conversation, because I think it's important. What, all that I want is for people to know. What's happening and to be able to celebrate the hard work that many, many, many people are doing. And Rick, I think you're right, that, that the more frequently people know that, there's really two layers. One is what is the staff doing and what could they use help with? But the other layer is what, what could a mom and dad do to help? Or a grandparent or an aunt and uncle could help their, their child to be successful. Um, the tips and tricks type of thing is really important.
And I think we, we covered the fact that we're, we chose one of the most rigorous programs.
We did.
I think providing feedback to the parents and the children is important as well.
I agree, yeah, it's a great point. So I'm happy to make that a part of my regular superintendent's update. I think that's a really good idea. I, I, however often you'd like us to come in and talk, we, my staff could talk to you for hours.
Hey, and I know we did a, there was a whole presentation on that program at one of our meetings. Do we have, bless you, do we have, is there a, um. There's probably gonna be communications regarding that program. Going, you know.
I got my first one.
Finding, finding things in folders. Right, so that's good.
Like a parent, like how you can help assist.
Perfect.
Awesome.
That's good, yeah.
You know, could the, um. Could the board get some of those?
Sure, well, I think what's important is, is there's a good, like, how you can help is good. I don't. I've, I've seen one of those too. But there's still maybe lingering questions about what, what is this thing? Why is it better? Why did we choose this? You know, maybe there's a.
Refresh.
A refresher now, now that school's underway and.
I am sure that Mr. Rocher would be happy to put together a, why did we choose this and do it at whatever board meeting you all would like?
Yeah.
I also even just wonder, you know, and I go, we might be going on topic, but just something like that. The, um, they could send help from principals. Like at elementary schools being like, so, you know, we're on, because they do, they all send newsletters, they all send updates, so like. But they highlight about the Amplify program, staff program, and what's been working well. Like, I'm sure, again, I don't want to put more work on them, but if there's ways like to just kind of educate, I agree with Rick, it will kind of help in the long run.
I, I do too, and, and I would be happy to have a conversation. I could invite Christine to PR, and we could add that to our conversation at public relations. Because it really is a public relations component.
It is.
You know, it's important. Um, I, I agree with all of this, but I think for the board purpose. A, a trimesterly update about the big picture and the whole strategic plan is adequate.
Yep.
But if you all feel that more information would support the reading or math program, you know that that's. Our primary goal is to improve student achievement in mathematics and reading. That is our goal. In whatever way we can. And so if, if I can support by providing more information to families, I'm totally happy to do that.
And can I just make a comment to that too? I honestly, I would rather see. It's not, us as board members, there's only so much we do. This program is the parents have, it, it, there needs to be the communication between the parents and the teachers.
And the classroom teacher.
It's, we're sort of, I don't want to say it doesn't matter to us, because, because it does, but we're not the ones that really are gonna be the ones to make it happen. And I remember, and I think too, like, for some of these. Kids at Baky. These are new parents to the school, so they don't know what to expect. So I do think that's really where our efforts need to be focused on. I remember my son, he went in, when he went into first grade, and then my daughter was in kindergarten, and she came home with lively letters. And I remember saying to somebody, oh, Molly's doing lively letters, this is so great. And somebody told me it was, oh, that was a school-wide curriculum.
And I remember saying to somebody, oh, Molly's doing lively letters. This is so great. And somebody told me it was, oh, that was a school-wide curriculum. My son did lively letters in kindergarten. I had no clue. Like, I did, and I think a lot of it really was just not knowing. Because I was such a new parent, I didn't know what I should be looking for. So I just, personally, I think that's really where our focus needs to be is. If this isn't, we, we can only do so much. We can't want this more than the parents want it for their kids. They have to want it, not us.
And, and as I said with the grade reporting, it really, the purpose of the grade reporting is to generate a conversation, but the conversation should happen. Far before the report card goes home. And so that is a, an important theme that aligns with what Rick is saying, which is that you, frequency of conversation. Frequency of communication. I, I just need for the public to understand that we can't do this alone. We need parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles to help us, to help the kids. I can't do it. The teachers can't do it alone. Six hours a day is not enough to teach reading and math.
To that point though, and to, I don't know who said PR. Did you say PR?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do think, given the fact that it's a new curriculum. The teachers, it's, it's a lot right now, right?
It is.
To your point about the principals, the teachers too, I don't want to add more. And I don't want to add, basically what I'm saying is I don't want to add any work to the teacher's plate that takes away from teaching students.
Right.
Right. So we, if we can take some of that on, you should. Right? And if we can do that high level communication to prepare them to have those conversations when they come out, I think that's the best thing we can.
Well, and the nice part with the reading program is that it's built into it. The problem is that the math program doesn't have that. I'm more worried about the math program.
We can, we can.
Than I am about the reading program because the reading program has those letters that you're already receiving.
Right.
Which I'm thrilled to hear you're getting them.
Yep.
Right? So we've made it clear that teaching to, to fidelity means following the program step by step. And so that's happening on, at least for the two of you. So we, we will continue to monitor that. So as far as for this evening. There's a lot cooking and I think that if we move to trimesterly, that will be adequate for the purpose of checking in on the strategic plan. If, if I read to you every detail of every box that's been filled in in those documents, it would be incredible. It will be an overview of where we are with those items. I, I'm particularly want to be clear that the Niasc accreditation, if you ask me the big three things that we have to deal with right now, one is. Managing the situation with, with, uh, with whether or not Fremont will stay with us because we'll be fine if they don't, but we need to be clear. That, that we want to keep them, right? Number two is that we, we, we have to maintain our Niasc accreditation. And number three is the teacher's contract and the budget. Those are the big, and if, in one four-month period, that is a lot of work for you all. So, so I am wide open. If you say to me, hey, Tom, could you send out a little more about this or just send me feedback, email me. I, I want to know what folks, you know, because we're trying to, Phyllis and I and Diana are grabbing, grabbing in every direction, keeping everything moving, right? So this, this is a, right, this, three small points, but a ginormous list.
These are big goals.
Big, big goals.
Yeah.
Most places would do Niasc accreditation. That would be a two-year goal and that would be it. That's it. It's huge. We are. And I love it.
It's because we're Sanborn.
New.
Right.
The new grading system.
Yes.
The goal.
Yes, because the pre-K two is also getting a new report card this year.
Yeah, always is, um, I guess my question's about the verb, like implement. Is it like?
Create and implement because.
Could be support the implementation of.
Yeah.
Cause you guys support us.
Yeah, I, I wanted to read more like it's a bit more of an ongoing. Process than a moment in time. So that, that sort of allows us to both put it in place and take steps to maintain it and support and communicate and do all.
So assist in the implementation of the new grading system.
You could, or you could say support the implementation of.
Yeah.
The new grading system.
Cause that can mean some things, you know?
Yeah. Cause you are, you're supporting by communicating with the community.
Right.
So, and, and also letting them, you'll have people ask you, why isn't there? People will ask you why, why did we change the K-two grading? So that's, it really is a communication modality for you all. But it's also the act of approving and accepting the K-two report card component, which is a big job. That one really falls in the ISA committee zone.
Thanks.
Sorry.
Um, okay, and then, um, so it sounds like we're okay with one and two. Um, what about, uh, the third one? Maintain the fiscal health and stability of the district by negotiating professional staff. Contract and continuing to work collaboratively with the town of Fremont. Sounds good.
Yeah, I like that one.
Yeah, there's a lot there.
Yeah. Okay, um, all right, so I'll read, I think, the amended.
Oh, thanks, Don.
Of all three. Um, so. Hold trimesterly reviews, tracking progress of the strategic plan, including but not limited to the implementation of K-five reading program. The implementation of the K-twelve math program and the Niasc accreditation. Secondly, support the implementation of the new grading systems for grades three K through five. And lastly, maintain the fiscal health and stability of the district by negotiating a professional staff contract. And continuing to work collaboratively with the town of Fremont. I have a motion to accept those as the board goals.
Motion to accept those as our goals.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you. All right. We got a lot of work to do. Okay, uh, second public comment. Since. No one's here, we will move on. Um, okay, so the next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. With a public hearing on a donation at six thirty P M in the Sanborn Regional High School Library. Also, the next budget committee, uh, meeting will be held on Thursday, September seventh, twenty twenty-three. At seven P M in the library at the Sanborn Regional High School. So we will move into non-public RSA ninety-one A, phone three, Roman numeral two, there's C and K.
So moved.
Great.
Second.
Second that, second. All right, and we will roll call in, uh, Rick.
Yes.
Jeremiah?
Yes.
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 Myself. Yes, Micah.
Yes.
Heather. All right, we'll take a quick five-minute break.